Let the light into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, well, thank you everybody for coming out. We hope you guys are enjoying the meal and all sit well. And we're also able to process everything here. So, the reason that we're here is for the public feeling for the Keep My Vote, Keep My Voice, the initiative that we are looking to have signatures and sign. This is a preliminary statement that's set up by Utah, the state of Utah, that we have to have these meetings. There's seven of them happening right now. And so they're going all over the state right now. And we're doing this for public, the public announcement is required. But the biggest thing is that we want to get more people to support, more people ready to go off and help out with this initiative. So that we can undo some of the stuff the legislature has done and get back to the standard that we've been at before. Where we actually have a representative system, a simple, more representative republic. So, the first part of this that we want to discuss is why the caucus is good for Utah. How many people have been delegates? Alright, so just about everyone. This guy too. And how many people have been, what would you say the most influential and best part about being a delegate? For yourself, for, almost everybody here has been a delegate. So what has been the best thing you've found about being a delegate?
You've got to really ask questions about what they believe in, how they were going to vote, and what their path voting, how they can determine that.
Okay, I found that too. There's a one-on-one connection, able to go off and find directly the people. For myself personally, I always use this story because I did a lot of training for the caucus. About eight years ago, we got, I was working for a couple of different organizations, volunteer only. But as a state delegate, I remember McCurbin ran for the first small little party, you know, because he came in and had the governor, I had to run again. I remember calling him and having the governor answer the phone and saying, "Oh, you're a state delegate. What can I do for you? How can I answer any questions?" And he really was there. This last election cycle, he didn't take the phone as much. But if I came to a meeting and asked a question, he had to answer it. And immediately afterwards in the primary, there was no chance that I would ever get ahold of them. He didn't have any meetings. Yeah, exactly. They had some debates, but the governor came in and then was gone. And, you know, I recognize he's busy and other things, but that's one of the powerful things about the caucus. It really forces our representatives to be accountable to us, the people. Without that accountability, without that forced interaction, we tend to take the path of least resistance. And, you know, the primaries, it's, you know, presidential primaries, other things, we're going off with message they can give to us. And if you have a better marketing team, your message tends to be a little bit better. But if we, for everyone that has that direct feedback and going in, another advantage of the caucus is the approach that you're able to take as a candidate. And this is one that I've personally experienced. I ran for Utah County Commissioner. And I've been asked again to run, this time I've said no. And here's the big difference between the two of them. When I ran six years ago, my total budget was $700. And I was 0.2% away from going through the primary. I got sick, I missed the meeting, I could have gone. The other guys had already spent over $5,000 to these. And I saw them $700 and my own mistake, I missed going to the primary. Because I got really sick, I couldn't talk, I had an impact, didn't make any. No, it's my mistake, I understand it. But there's no chance I could even do that in this election. The election cost, I mean, I had some research, but people came and said they wanted to do it. For Utah counties, looking $30,000 to $35,000 per candidate. If you want to take the money out of politics, you go to a representative republic system. Because if you go by how much you can get the word out, and you don't have people directly invested into finding answers and being responsible for that, then you are spending more and more money. And so you have to get more and more backers. And you have to get more and more people that are willing to spend money for you. And then you are turning back to them and you get... They came and said, "Yeah, I gave you some money." In politics, it's, "Well, you're right. I, you know, I can't listen, I can't direct you. But I'll listen if you want to vote." And there's a need for that. There's a need for people to pay attention to people who have invested. But that's one of the great things about the caucus is that we can get people who are local, who aren't paid, who have the agendas, most of their neighborhoods. They may have, you know, obviously all of us have our biases, all of us have our own agenda items that we want to do. There are certain people that we're not going to vote for because we look at it and say, "No, I don't like their ideals. I'm a delegate, I'm never going to vote for them no matter what they say." Yeah, you know, let's be honest, we're all in, right? But in a neighborhood, the people that know me, if all of us have that same attitude, then that's what we want. And if we don't have all that neighborhood, it's very hard to get people to vote. Now, it's interesting because my first time, I don't know if it's a delegate, it was in Pleasant Grove, which is one of the lowest voting precincts in Utah County and Salt Lake County. It was like, your voting percentage was about 3% for a while. But I came in, one, and there was a guy that had been a delegate, and I totally opposed everything he was for. And I didn't know much about becoming a delegate, but I knew how to block somebody from being a delegate. And I did not want him to stay a delegate. It was pretty easy to ask questions, and he answered, and everyone was like, "We're not voting him to stay a delegate." And it was weird because there were two of them, there were only three people running, and he was one of the major players in that city. In fact, he's the president of this position in the government, who's stayed around, and I hope that I can help. If you're able to know who the people are, you can do that. And it creates these different kinds of environments that really make us accountable to not just, you know, politicians, but to the people that we're closest to. Count My Vote, SB 54 has done a lot of damage in that. Again, personal story. I ran for Legislative District Six. Cory Malloy, myself, and there was another guy who was a signature gatherer only. And he was going on the Lively and the Brew, SB 54, about. I went and talked to him, and I didn't think that he was a candidate that I wanted to represent. And I came out of, Cory Malloy, I actually came out of a convention within two votes early. He was just slightly above me. My team and myself, we prayed about it, we looked into it, and we said, "Well, we're going to talk, we're going to come really close. We think we might be, we think on our numbers, we're going to come slightly higher than Cory in the end. But we're going to split it about 62%, about 62% of the vote." And we came out, and the guy who got, and so I backed out. I said, "Cory, you're going to go ahead, I'm lower, you go ahead and take this and run it. But I'm watching you, I'm a delegate. If you mess up, I'm going to come back and run again soon." But the end vote was 62.38. Cory had a good election. But had we not had that, we would have actually had a chance to have people that, I mean, Cory and I are pretty aligned on a lot of things, our approaches. Our approaches to how, and some of the things that are going on, I still believe, I think I would have done a better job. That's part of the privilege of office, you know, trying to be helpful with it. But there's things about that all over the state. You have people that are getting on the ballot and all it's doing because of SB 54, increasing the amount of money that comes into politics. As soon as that happens, where money comes in, where does it mostly come from? It comes from out of state. We get out-of-state people coming in, influencing our elections. And so we have a lot of those in town. Yes. Make sure you speak up, because I don't know how good that microphone is.
Count My Vote, I put the signature out, it's not long until we get down. I don't think any politicians would want it. If we don't have the caucus and law enforcement to us, I think we're all going to lose.
Yeah, as well.
And our signature threshold here, you need 106 signatures to get on the ballot. That's what that's for.
Which, for which office? For legislative?
For county and commissioner.
Oh, county commissioner, yeah. Yeah, it's amazing. You could do that in two or three hours. Welcome.
Sorry to interrupt. Is everyone doing okay? And if I bring anything to dream. Um, I just like walk, I'm glad. Sorry about that.
So, Count My Vote for the SB 54 has made it so that less people have to know about you initially. Responsible to less people. You can pay people to get on the ballot, I mean, get you on the ballot. And, and to be honest, Keep My Voice, we are paying people to get signatures for the initiative. Because we have to fight the same system that the Count My Vote initiative is doing as well. I mean, if we could go back and change everything and get rid of SB 54, I would absolutely allow them to gather signatures. But I would do it as volunteers only, you can't pay them. That would change the whole dynamic of a lot of things. I mean, initiatives are, we get on to that subject, you know, after we finish the meeting. But Count My Vote does some very specific things. One is it protects the freedom of association. We're being told by the legislature, we're not allowed to say who is a member of each party. This is a non, Keep My Voice is not affiliated with any party. I don't know if anybody's Republican or Democrat or Libertarian, but anybody, but I could gather signatures and get on a Libertarian ballot. And there's nothing they can do to stop it. Or the Democrats. And I've attempted to do it just to be funny. Democrats in my ward, and I'd say it would be funny. But there's nothing that anybody can do to stop it. And so you can't say, "You're not allowed to be a member of my group because you have not obeyed my rules." Well, I think that the Boy Scouts already won that argument. They had people say, "No," and they said, "No, it's part of our rules, it's part of our identity." Whether or not they have obeyed their oath, we don't say the difference. But they won that. They won all the way to the Supreme Court. Another thing is it restores the integrity of the caucus convention. And we've talked about it before, the caucus convention is one of the most powerful tools that we have to rein in our government and our elected officials. They have to show up. You know, if you don't show up to a meeting, no matter how great you are, I've been to meetings for people running for office. They don't show up, and you go, "I'm not voting for him." He did not give me the time of day necessary for me to find out who he is. And that changes that I am. We didn't come out of it. The next one is, it saves, now this is an interesting thing, it saves the state of Utah about $245,000 every election cycle. And the additional $3.3 million of the cost of Count My Vote's initiative that they're driving right now, no people will get. Well, that goes 3.3, 3.6 million if this initiative passes, based on what the current costs are. And obviously, we're always trying to reduce costs. We don't want to give any more of our money to the government. They already received, the bills are passing, I'm like, "Why are we keeping them going and spending that money?" And then also, one thing that also goes on is it preserves the signature path for those that would like to get on the ballot. A lot of people, we don't remember, the signature path has always been there, but for unaffiliated voters. You can affiliate for yourself, get your signatures, and it's pretty low. I don't remember what it is, but it's not that high.
300.
I think it was like 500 in Utah County, but don't quote me on that, but it was pretty low to get on, and it was only a couple thousand, you could see. So if you want to run, and you have your own ideas, and you still want to get on, and you don't want the party telling you what to say or not to say, there's always been a path in Utah, how to get on the ballot. And it preserves that right. We're allowed to do that and just represent ourselves. I think there's several candidates who are coming out, but they just did their own independent signature, they could get on the ballot and move on. Instead of forcing through this other path, so. That is the total wrap that we have about Keep My Voice. I would do that way faster than I thought I would, but that leaves questions available for anyone. Anybody have any questions? You apparently had a question, you put that.
No.
I'll let you ask it after. Anybody have any questions about this you can answer, or any topics of discussion, anything I brought up?
How does it, I understand that 3.35 million that's on my vote box, how does this save 200?
245.
Per cycle.
Per cycle.
How does it save?
Because there's, do you guys print that out? Yeah, so the verify, okay, that's what it is. So, for a statewide office, it costs about $30,000 per candidate to verify all signatures. And so, and then it goes down a little bit by county and other things, obviously. This county not as much.
But the dollar signature, $30,000 signature, right?
Yeah, so something like that. And then you also have, so if all of the statewide candidates had done signatures to get on the ballot, it would be 245,000. That also doesn't account for all of the other offices that can get on the ballot. So county commissioners, legislative senate, auditor, you know, I mean, all of those candidates add up the count in order to verify that. And then, and that's, you know, within the range, you can go up from there because if you have people that are closest signature, then they have to call and verify, and the dollar happens. And so, you know, one of the problems that people who are supporting the Count My Vote in SB 54, they say, "Oh, it takes so long for the county..." What's his name? County clerk, yes, thank you. The county clerk to get organized and set up the election. And all they're doing though by adding signatures is making that job more and more difficult. Because they add more and more, then they have to hire more people, and then that costs us more money. And then they get more candidates that are on. We get more money if they come from out of state, they're trying to influence our local election. And that raises those counts up. So there's just, the Lieutenant Governor's office is in charge, and they have to hire more people. So the cost just keeps going up, and the longer this process is going on, the sooner there's more people trying to influence the office by paying for people to get on the ballot. So, Count My Vote is a big taxing group. Pretty much, yeah. $117,000 for the initiative. And then we are looking, I think we're looking to increase it by 100% if we make sure. We're going to get as many signatures as we can, just verify that we have. Yes.
So, if Count My Vote and Keep My Voice pass, what's the other thing?
Keep My Voice, I believe would trump that as a constitutional, I don't think that you should have both.
Pass, no.
But I understand whoever gets more votes.
Oh, really?
And if there's a tie, then, which is almost a draw.
Then we have to vote again or something, or you flip it, oh, yeah. Well, and that's only if they get their initiative on the ballot as well. Now, the Miller Group has been paying people to sit in front and actually be inside of their sports arenas, gather signatures. So it's, we are, we are fighting against much larger money issues. People who really, really, really want to get rid of the caucus.
Get as many signatures as possible.
What's an ideal?
Yeah, and that's one of the, yeah, that's one of the things. And we can, we'll talk about that a little bit. Part of the things that if you're signing up to help and volunteer, we're going to contact you, ask your help on caucus, when I can gather signatures, to help out, getting these, getting these, uh, many signatures we can.
Just so you know, our package meeting is held in one location, in the local county. And we don't advertise this, but I think we are going to let Keep My Voice.
You know, and that's an interesting point that I want to bring up. Here's, people have said, "Oh, how dare they be allowed to gather signatures for this initiative?" The State Central Committee has voted many times. I was on the State Central Committee on the last term, for the last two years before this one. And I voted three times to keep the lawsuit going and supporting the Keep My Vote. It was the Count My Vote, I think it was the Keep My Caucus. We changed names too many times, that was. But the sound of it is the Keep My Voice. We voted on that, while I was there, three times to keep it going, to support it. They have voted since that time, three more times as well, I mean, in the last, too many times, yeah. Fighting again, but the State Central Committee is the one, they're the officers and the leaders of the party. And so, I, Keep My Voice being at the Republican events, because the State Central Committee of the Republican Party has voted to be there, they have fully authorized by the Republican Party to be there, whereas Count My Vote is not, they have rejected mine, time to time again. Now, for the Democrats and other things, would be glad to be there, if you know anyone, and if you have the Democrats there too.
Which was my question. Can we take a position on ballots?
They already have.
So I'm the chairman of the Carver County Republican Party. Can we take a position for Keep My Voice ballots? Or Count My Vote?
Yeah, you can. You can, the State Central Committee of the county or the state can take positions. It's, you know, it doesn't force people, but it's more of a position we support. And we did that in Utah County before we had the new leadership now. We had supported that several times. So I believe that's, and it depends on the bylaws of your county. Counties will vary on that. The state allows, the county party, state central committee, depends on authorizing through that, so. But again, reject your bylaws, just to make sure on that.
Do your political gurus in this forecast a good chance of winning in GoDensher and controlling the ballot?
We're getting mass support. I mean, it's, it's one of those things, here's a, if Count My Vote comes out and says, "Oh, we did policy.com did a review, and you guys are going to fail me." Okay, well, who does that run by? Well, it's run by one of the deciders of the Count My Vote initiative, so. There's some skewing that we're maybe worried about. We've done our own internal polling, and it's seeing much higher results. It's going to be a fierce battle. I mean, it really, I mean, be honest, there are people that are passionate on both sides. There are people that really do not want the caucus around. They don't like the idea of being responsible to people that are running.
My real friend, he stood at the block of the Central Committee, hand-me-down t-shirts and flyers. There was only one person who was standing there, and I was scared. They were all supposed to everything, jumping up, saying, "He must be."
Bring him in suit now, because his name's going to be on the official right. Sorry, Derek. I know, I have to.
The t-shirts, we were sending t-shirts.
Our numbers, have everybody seen the video on Keep My Voice meeting on Facebook? You see that video done by Trenton Robinson? He's a friend of mine, I laughed with him at the trial. We have gotten numbers, I think views is over 180,000 now. And I think our paid percent is 2%. Like, we just tested the water to kind of prime it, and we pay off, like, Keep My Voice paid almost nothing to get that. People are sharing it, they're making comments. We're working hard to answer the requests. There's thousands of people asking questions all the time. Trying to stay on top of it.
So, Keep My Voice stays in, and then you do a little bit of the other thing. Will that help us when we redistrict? Rural American, rural American, rural Utah especially.
It won't really, yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't really affect the redistricting. What it does help is to get people who are more sympathetic on the redistricting. That will give rural Utah a bigger voice. And make sure those are more equitable to the population, for people that are there. The last redistricting, I actually went to all of the meetings, Utah and Salt Lake County, dangerous areas. I will drive far, I won't drive that much, because it thrives. And, you know, I think that we need to make sure while we are getting people in there that will understand the power and that the responsibility of having a voice will be everyone in the state. That, that's, it doesn't really affect the redistricting by that, it will change, it will give people greater voice, it will give you a greater voice. It will elect people, exactly, it will elect people that actually want to show up. Without Keep My Voice, it's going to be harder to get people to be on the ballot. And I was brought up before, that, you know, without the caucus, there's not much you need to show up. It's a rural Utah, your population. If I was running for a state office, and I had done signature routes only, I would go to Davis County, Ogden County, Salt Lake County, Utah County. That'd probably be enough. Because that would be enough numbers for you. And I'd probably go to St. Louis.
In our last, in a special election, so, I did a map of that. And at the convention, Carver County had about 3% of the votes. At the primary, it was about 1%. Is that because of simply voter turnout, because of the delegates and children?
Yeah.
Right, so the delegates.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So we could basically make the case that we get a greater percentage.
You know, and it's interesting because this is, you know, we look, I don't like to look back to the original Constitution. The fight that the Federalists and the ethnic Federalists had with the Constitution is, we did, the founders were worried about two things. They wanted to account for the number of people and understand that where there's more people and there's a bigger community, they should have more of a voice. But they also understood that we had basic rights, and that larger voice could not kill off the smaller voice, or you would lose the republic. The other democracy, our founding fathers warned us about democracy at every level. Don't let it be a correct vote. Don't let it be, especially for the president, I mean, if you look back to the original, we didn't vote for senators. That wasn't until the progressive era really took off and started growing for senators. Now senators are pretty much a national race. National money comes in from everywhere, there's been hundreds of dollars. It's because they got to meet a representative system. Presidency was supposed to be electoral, we kind of go to that, but it's more of a popular thing. And some states have maintained the caucus, which allows them to elect who their electoral votes are. And the delegates, we kind of screwed up in our laws here in Utah, and they're fighting fixing it now, but we're working on that rule. And then the people that were supposed to be elected locally by those local representatives, was the House of Representatives, because they turned over. So they had a chance, something happened, they had a chance to get it. But the others had to maintain power for so long that it was harder to get them out, because you could kill them. Money, you could build up influence, you could, people forget. So, the same thing, and so they set that up as a balancing system. Well, in Utah, we maintained most of that balancing system as a way to have, our representatives have to come to us and have to be accountable for the things that they are doing. And without that, without that accountability and the constant threat, I worry what's going to happen to our citizens. Yes.
I think the hardest part I've heard is that the delegates are out of touch. How do you know about that?
Well, I would have to say that if my neighbor, you know, one of the biggest fights that we have in this country right now are maintaining neighborhoods and maintaining that connection. If I know, you know, I know a lot of my neighbors, I know my neighbors' names, and they get to know me. And if us as delegates got together and voted against some of the people, it was horrible. They wouldn't remember who I am and not let me be there as a delegate. Because, and I wish, I mean...
But how do they know my vote? There's no record.
There is no record.
I think this is an issue, but I have a feeling it's not addressed by the Keep My Voice initiative. My sense is that within the Republican Party, and if they want to do it within the Democrat Party, they can decide to address it. My sense is that in the Republican Party, we should make it so that, kind of like in the Constitution, 20% of the House or Senate says, "We want the votes to be recorded here," it's a constitutional requirement. And I, it might be hard with the sweep dimension of 3,000 delegates, but I think it's doable that a week after the convention, anyone who goes to the Republican Party can say, "Who did Kendra look for for government?"
And, and Keep My Voice, you're right, it's not, and here's, and here's the reason why, let's go back to one of the first things that this initiative has done. It restores the First Amendment of the parties to operate themselves. We're not trying to tell the parties on the run, we have some ideas, we have some ideas that we think are great. I'm sure everybody here has some ideas that they think they're great. We should be fixing things with, we should always be fixing things with the delegate, making it more tangible, making it easier to find information from the delegates, uh, all sorts of other things. But we're not trying to do that, we're just trying to fix the system back to the way it was, so that the parties can fix it themselves. Um, and, and, and we're right, there are things that don't work as well as you mentioned, with the caucus. But the party should be given the opportunity to fix it and work it to themselves, um, and if delegates aren't happy with it. I don't know if, anybody, how many, who's the longest, who's been the delegate longest? How many, how many years, you have anybody 10 years or longer? I think 12 years, eight years, eight years. Do you remember going to state, I mean, the state conventions, eight years, about six years ago, 10 years ago? People were fighting, and they were really coming at each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was bad. It's, I mean, with as bad as it is now, at least central committee is united, and most of the delegates are united. And we've actually fixed a lot of the decorum issues, people have figured out how to get along. So same things are divided more now than others, which is one of the arguments. It's, it's not one of that, it's something that we're always working on. You know, we, we are really polarized right now, but that's something that happens when people don't agree. We're all different. We need to be able to associate with the people that we want to associate with. We need to be able to establish rules for a membership. Keep My Voice restores that opportunity for the parties.
I'm a delegate, and I see no problem, if people want to know how I vote, I'm all in favor of being a public.
Right, so we don't have that right now. So if your neighbors start elect you, and you go home, they don't know what you did, so it's not like they can come back and say, well, I liked how you voted, but people are mad, they don't know. So, again, I just, I really want to have something to say, and, oh, the delegates are upset, what, I just don't know what to say.
Well, and, and if we, and if we fix this and went back to the party being responsible for the delegates and all that, we'd get to have those discussions in the state central committee without having all of that. And you can walk around, if you're a delegate, or if you want to go see a... You will see people are supporting pretty fast, with stickers, handprints, and they're trying to convince you. I mean, that's one of the great things about the delegate, and I can call a delegate, say, you support me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm facing tough competition, you want to support, yeah, I'm gonna support you, I'm gonna tell the neighbors, and it's all, it's a great organization, so.
One of my answers would be that I think at the caucus meetings, where it is a meeting of neighbors, so to speak, people have a better idea of the integrity of the people they're dealing with, rather than someone distant. And it's probably not 100% true, but I bet you it's about 98% true or more, that if you ask your delegate how they voted on something, they'll give you an honest response, or especially if there's someone that you trust.
Let me go back to John Adams.
And if you didn't trust, we'll vote toward them next time anyway.
Right. Let me go back to John Adams, who says, if we had people ever, you know, as angels, we wouldn't need it, we need the government. But since we do, we might, we should have a Republican government, which is the closest thing we can get.
Some people say that, though, they always follow us with the two loopholes since SB 54, which is the governor's race. And then a recent one, which would be John Curtis and Chris Herring.
Right.
And so they, they say, well, the delegates are out of touch, because days after Chris Herring, and yet people voted for John Curtis, it's the same thing.
Well, and, and, you know, we could get into what it is, but look at the policies that came out from the governor's office and from Curtis's office in Indianapolis. Which, and by what Jonathan Johnson's been doing and Chris Herring's been doing. Which of those four follow Republican Party statutes of votes? It's Chris Herring and Jonathan Johnson. So, uh, apparently the delegates were voting based upon Republican Party left. People don't always do it, but you can't say they lost, as you mentioned, they just didn't win, neither party, neither person won. That's what we do, if it's close.
I think Curtis, I think Curtis got one, that was it, because of the wire.
Well, we won't get, again, this is not Keep My Voice, and we're not gonna go too far, either, we can talk about it afterwards. Again, public record.
I've always, uh, I keep seeing people making that same comment you were just saying, that they're making about Jonathan Johnson. The problem is, is, uh, it's not that the primary voters really made the decision, Jonathan, they never heard of Jonathan Johnson, they're all very good.
Yeah. And I think that's an excellent point to why the caucus system is more powerful. How many people, how many people are state delegates during the time of the last election?
I think the delegates got a press, pushed a primary in this.
I, I agree, I agree, but, but how many, how many people have heard of Jonathan Johnson ahead of time? I mean, I, I am no good for you. How many, but I got, I mean, as a delegate, I got personal invites to come to his house and sit down and talk to him. They fed me fruit snacks, they didn't try to buy me, they literally fed me fruit snacks. You know, how often do you get a chance to meet the governor? If you're a delegate, he will answer you, they'll answer you, and it goes back to that. The delegates, I don't believe they got it wrong, I think they were voting for the one that they felt was most conservative, followed the Republican platform. The primary is based on other criteria. What do they think, how, you know, how would they govern, or who have they heard of, or... Because I can guarantee, most people haven't met with Jonathan Johnson, most people haven't met another one-on-one conversation with Governor Herbert about what your policies are and what they were gonna do. So, uh, I mean, I ask people after the primary, did you hear the tape of Governor Herbert telling people that if they gave him money, they could have it, they could have it open in their policy, he would do what he could to help you? And the minimum did was what, I mean, 25,000 dollars. How many, no, almost no one I asked that words outside of, you know, being involved in politics had heard of. So, you know, there's some, the caucus brings more information. Now, the caucus has made some mistakes, we've got in Utah County, that everybody admits was a mistake. It happened, we're not saying this is absolute 100%. We're saying, let it go through the proper channels to get fixed by the parties, and let them run themselves. All right, any other questions? Any general comments anybody'd like to say about the caucus?
Can I make a statement?
Sure, you are, you are welcome, why don't you go ahead and stand up? I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down and take a drink and let you make your statement.
My name is Edward Ritt, I live in Price, Utah, and I want to compare Count My Vote to Keep My Voice. Number one, Count My Vote's a tax on citizens to subsidize the wealthy and well-connected who could not get on the ballot in the caucus system. They seem to create a system whereby the wealthy and those owned by the wealthy can detain office.